Yeah, nobody messes that up too much. Although you know what, lately when I say my name is Jim and have James written down, people don't know.
Yeah, definitely younger.
This is you.
All right, 7:49, we call the meeting to order. I'd like to apologize for starting a little late. We had to go over a few things. Adequate notice, this meeting has been provided in publication to the Home News Tribune. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the government which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Melanson?
Here.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Vigna?
Here.
Ms. Vito?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Okay. All right, just a general announcement, no new testimony will be heard after 10:00 PM. Everybody should have a copy of the minutes from August 12th. If there are no questions, motion that we accept the minutes.
Will you at that meeting, Cheryl?
Yeah.
Cheryl was at that meeting?
Yeah, except it should be Ms. instead of Mr. At least this year, anyway.
I was not at that meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to memorializations. Peoli Properties LLC, 360 George's Road, Minor Subdivision, create two separate lots for two separate uses. Do we have that here?
Yeah, Jim and I have gone over this with Lou, and we both gave our comments, and I believe they've also been distributed to the applicant.
Okay, we're voting on this?
Yeah, so only those people who voted two months ago on this application can participate in this.
I have that list, I realize I didn't put it on the resolution.
I'm not sure I have this here in August. I don't think so.
Emma won't call your name if you weren't here, don't worry.
All right.
All right.
All right.
Ms. Hutchinson? Here, yes. Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Ms. Vito?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
There were six eligible.
Okay. Okay, so that's approved. Move on to Mega International LLC, 1060 Aaron Road, Preliminary and Major Site Plan, 4,000 square foot cigar lounge.
Same thing, we gave our comments to Lou, we sent to the applicant. I don't think we have any comments back, correct Lou?
Correct. All right, and we'll need a vote on the memorialization.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Ms. Vito?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with Louis P. Raggo to serve as an Alternative Planning Board Attorney. Need a motion on that resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. She second?
Okay. Mr. Melanson?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Ms. Vito?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional services to provide legal counsel in 2026.
Yeah, Pat, can I just say one thing? These next three resolutions are all going to be authorizing us to go out for RFQs, just professionals. But we need to do them individually.
Okay. Okay, so this is for legal counsel in 2026. Motion on that one?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Melanson?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Ms. Vito?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional services to provide engineering services in 2026. Motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
I second. Mr. Melanson?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Ms. Vito?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
All right, resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional services to provide traffic engineering services in 2026.
Yeah, if I could just make a comment on this. We've been doing this for the last 10, 12 years or so, since Maurice Rochid from what was then the Mazer Group is now Collier Engineering. He did the traffic study with all the roadway improvements for the Transit Village to $10 million worth of improvements, and since that time, we have authorized a separate contract, which would, you know, Jim is amazing on traffic, but Maurice looks at the bigger picture, the highway improvements and things like that. So it's for special traffic engineering services. It's not for reviewing, you know, on-site here in the Transit Village.
So for edification of our vast viewing audience, this is paid for by the applicants? SROs?
Oh, yeah, yeah. All legal services, engineering services, the special services of the traffic engineering consultant, all of that would be paid for by an applicant if we needed to bring him in.
Right.
And most of the expense of the legal and engineering services also get billed to applicants.
Right, okay. All right. Did we vote on that one? I don't think we did.
We didn't have a motion on it yet.
We need a resolution on the traffic engineering services.
I move.
Second. Mr. Melanson?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Ms. Vito?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, and resolution authorizing the appointment of Emma Von Thun as Planning Board Secretary.
I make that motion, appoint Emma as Planning Board Secretary.
I second it.
All right, Mr. Melanson?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Ms. Vito?
Yes.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, that business is done with. We'll move on to a new application. Main Street, North Brunswick, Phase 1H, Block 141, Lots 44.04, 63.02, 121, comma, 141.04. Preliminary and final major subplan for five new amended lots, amended preliminary and major site plan approval, final major site plan approval. Okay, is the applicant ready?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Peter Flannery with the Law Firm of Bishar Hoff on behalf of the applicant, North Brunswick TOD Associates. This is an application that's part of a longstanding group of development approvals with which I'm sure most, if not all, members of the board are familiar with. This is the Main Street TOD project here in North Brunswick along Route 1. We've been obtaining approvals since about 2010. The development that includes, of course, the Target, Costco, the Correa by Maria, the Green Turtle, Panera, Shake Shack. We were in here for, maybe three years ago, for Phase 1F, which was a residential component of the project. We're here this evening for yet another phase, Phase 1H. This is for amended preliminary and final major site plan and preliminary and final amended major subdivision approval for about 122 residential units, buildings T1 through T11, as they're called, which includes 98 market rate units and 24 affordable units, as well as parking and site improvements. This is part of the property at 2,300 Route 1, Block 141, Lots 4404, 5004, 6302, 121, and 141.04. It's under the I-2 Industrial Zone standards, and of course with the transit-oriented mixed-use development overlay zone standards, and this application is fully in conformance with those zoning standards with no variances requested. It's also consistent with the general development approvals which were previously obtained for the project, and this directly amends preliminary major site plan and subdivision approvals from 2014. There are three checklist waivers. These are typical checklist waivers, which we've requested for most of the applications involving this TUMUD. That's Appendix A, Item 17, Appendix C, Item 45, and Appendix D, Item 31. These have to do mostly with contours of the plan.
So what do they refer to for, you know, so can you explain what those waivers are to the board?
Sure, Mr. Vigna. Appendix A, Item 17 is for existing Appendix A, Item 17 is for existing proposed contours at one-foot intervals, based on National Geodetic Vertical Datum 1929, to determine general slope and natural drainage of the land. Where necessary to evaluate drainage, the board shall require contours to be shown for all lands within 200 feet of the property in question. The applicant is requesting relief from Item 17, because the vertical difference from one edge of the site to the other is three feet over 800 feet of horizontal difference, and two-foot contours would not be useful. Adequate spot grades are shown for all areas, however. The second is Appendix C, Item 45, which is existing and proposed contours at two-foot intervals, based on that same datum, to determine general slope and natural drainage of the land. Where necessary to evaluate drainage, the board shall require contours to be shown for all lands within 200 feet of the property in question. The applicant is requesting relief from this item, because the vertical difference from one edge of the site to the other is also three foot over 800 of feet of horizontal difference, and two-foot contours would not be useful.
Peter, could you move the microphone closer to you?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah, or can, does the mic move, I don't want you to have to lean over, I think you can.
Little bit.
Get it closer.
Is that better?
Yeah.
And then the last one is Appendix D, Item 31, which is applicant requesting relief from the first part of this Item 31, providing two-foot contour grading plans, because the vertical difference from one edge of the site to the other is three foot over 800 feet of horizontal difference, and two-foot contours would not be very useful. Again, adequate spot grades are shown for all areas.
And Jim, they've provided support for you, for you to, you're fine with those waivers?
Yes, we've asked for some additional spot grades here and there, that, as we tried to confirm some grading, so my, in my memo, we don't take issue to this waiver, provided that they'll, they'll give us the spot grading that we request.
Okay.
Right, and we agree to that condition as well. I have, I intend to put on just two witnesses this evening, Matt Wanamaker is our planner, and Nick Verderesi is our traffic engineer. We do have other witnesses here to answer questions and provide testimony if needed, including our engineer, architect, and stormwater engineer. We could have everyone sworn in at once, I think that's typically what we do here at the board, or I can have them sworn in one at a time, as they present testimonies up to the board, really.
We'll, we'll do them as they come up, that's fine, one at a time.
One at a time, okay, great, so.
Peter, can I just say, you said you're just gonna put your planner and your engineer on?
Correct.
All right, so this is a unique, this is a unique style of townhouse for us, with, with the, you know, split floors, so is your architect?
Our architect is here and ready to present.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, you know, Nathaniel was nice enough to come in and spend a half an hour with the zoning officer and me going over it, so we understand it, but, you know, you need to get your architect on, so the board can present it, and so the board can understand.
Absolutely, we'd be happy to do so. So, we can start off with our planner, who's gonna provide an overview of the project, really kind of go through the various plans, materials that were submitted, and answer general questions, and then I thought maybe we'd go to traffic very quickly, and then we could bring up our architect.
Okay, sounds good.
That works for the board.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Can I have Matt Wanamaker, our planner?
I wanted to mention before we get into the witness, that I did confer with Emma before the meeting, and notice and publication are, are fine.
Thank you.
I, I should have mentioned that earlier. If you could raise your right hand, please, state your name and spell your last name, please.
Matthew Wanamaker, W-A-N-A-M-A-K-E-R.
With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wanamaker, just for the record, if you could state your qualifications, education experience as a professional planner? Yes, I have a bachelor's and master's degrees from Kappa University's School of Architecture and Planning. Licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey in good standing, I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, and I am currently working as the planning director for Panone Associates.
For who?
Panone Associates.
Panone Associates, okay.
We'll, we'll accept them as an expert, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wanamaker, if, we actually have a mic over here, if you wanna use this, might be easier if we're gonna, are you using exhibits? Yes, we should. Yeah, so, why don't we just switch over here, I'll give you this, the hand mic.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have you point, point to a few things? Okay, so we, as mentioned, and as you know, we have been involved in this for some time.
This should be marked A1, please.
A1, this is a phase plan, I believe it was part of the package, but we can mark it A1.
Not in that corner. A1 and evidence.
Yes, so just running through previous phases quickly, Phase 1A, the initial infrastructure improvements, including the Costco roadway improvements. 1B, we started to build out the commercial component with the Target. 1C, and 1E, more of the residential component, the hotel, the Green Turtle, things like that. 1F, which is in progress now, more of the restaurant facilities, and some of the additional residential properties that Toll is building up at the corner. So we're here tonight for 1H, that subject site here in green. Any questions on that recap?
We're looking for the engineer.
All right. Probably move on to the next one. So I did, yeah. Right, so we wanted to do a closer in exhibit here of the layout that we're here to discuss tonight.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you just for one second? I apologize. Jim, we can't seem to find your report.
Emma, Jim's report, CM's report's in the packet, right?
No.
See the Viola one in there?
That's in there, yeah.
So I'll go print it.
Not the, not the. Could you do that for, for everybody, and we'll, we'll continue in the meantime. All right, I'm sorry for the interruption, go ahead.
Okay, all right, so just moving through this quickly, as we do have the architect here who can answer some of the additional questions, I just wanted to go over the overview of the proposal. We can mark this A2? A2.
Do we, if we have that, we don't need to mark that, but the colorized one previously should be marked.
Okay, sure.
So, if we have this, we should be good.
All right, okay, so what we're looking at here are stacked townhomes, a total of 11 buildings, ranging in eight, from eight units to 14 units in each building. The totals, 122 total townhome units in condo ownership, of that 122, 98 are market rate, and 24 are affordable, all are for sale units. They're interlocking, which we can explain further, and that they're not one over the other, they kind of interlock certain pieces horizontally and vertically.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that a little slower, please?
Yes, these are interlocking stacked units, so they're not exactly one over the other, they do interlock horizontally and vertically, which we can show in more detail in the floor plans.
Okay, if you could just speak a little slower, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
No problem, so, when we're breaking up each of the, the types of units here, the, the market rate, there are 61 two-bedroom units, and 61 three-bedroom units, so that's that total of 122 stacked townhome units.
And, I'm sorry, how many affordable, I'm sorry?
24.
24, okay, thank you. I thought the packet showed the. And then for the affordable, is it a mix of two and three bedroom, or is it?
Yes, I was about to get to that next, so, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll jump ahead to the affordable, so. I'm sorry, before we go on to the affordables, I think the market rate, there was a discrepancy here, I think it's actually 49 two-bedrooms and 49 three-bedrooms. Okay. It's 98 total.
So 49 and 49?
For the market rate.
Correct.
Market rate.
Thank you for the clarification. So, so those affordable units, there would be one one-bedroom, 15 two-bedrooms, and eight three-bedroom units. I'm sorry, again, I, I think, there was a discrepancy in the plans, it's, it's four one-bedroom, 16 two-bedrooms, and four three-bedrooms.
All right, so let's go back over that. So we have 24 affordable, so what are they?
Correct, that hasn't changed, yes.
Okay, so could you repeat that again?
That's right.
The, the affordables are?
Four one-bedrooms.
Four one-bedrooms.
16 two-bedrooms.
Okay.
And four three-bedrooms.
And that's in accordance with UHAC standards?
Correct.
There's, there's state standards that govern the, you know, the breakdown for the number of one, two, and three-bedroom units. Okay.
Great.
Okay, so, can we do the market rate units again? Can we get a break out of that?
49.
Changes.
Sure, I'd rather read it off of that page. Forty, forty-nine two-bedrooms and forty-nine three-bedrooms.
Forty-nine two-bedrooms, forty-nine three-bedrooms.
It's, it's still the equal number of units, it's just it's a smaller overall amount, because it's, there are only 98 market units. All right, so those are the numbers, let's talk a little bit about operationally how they would work. So they are units that have a walk-in entry and also garage, many of them have garage parking in the back, that's tandem parking. Trash is gonna be handled internal to the buildings, and that will be wheeled out and collected by the township. We are doing some improvements to the surrounding circulation system, as well as stormwater, we will be revising the existing pipe network for new design, but all stormwater will flow into existing basins, so there's no flow change.
If we can go back to the parking just for one second, so we have a parking garage, we have a, one garage space, one driveway space.
Yes.
And there, how many units have no spaces?
We'll, we'll get testimony from the engineer to go. Yeah, Mr. Verderesi can, can answer, our traffic engineer, Nick Verderesi, Mr. Chairman, can answer those questions, go into more detailed testimony regarding the various parking spaces. And so, and.
Okay.
Requirements.
Just a question with the, just now around parking, it's a single parking space, so if it's, even if it's a three-bedroom, it's still just one single space?
We'll explain that more in detail.
Oh, okay, all right.
And, and some of them are handled different ways with tandem, and, you know, in the garage. With guest bases, you know.
Then, the number, the number of parking spaces, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, the number of parking spaces required are based on the residential site improvement standards, and I think you're. I, I see a head shaking in the back, we have a local, we have a local, we, we have an ordinance in town, so let me, let me put it back, let me change that. We have a lesser, we require less spaces than residential site improvement standards, but I believe your, your project is designed so that you exceed the number of parking spaces required by our ordinance, and in effect, actually meet the number required by the residential site improvement standards. Is that correct, Jim?
I think that's correct, but we're gonna need to have.
Right, so who's, who's going to clarify, who's going to clarify that for us?
I think the traffic engineer.
Mr. Verderesi will, will answer that, when he, he's up, momentarily, Mr. Vigna.
All right, okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I just wanted to go into briefly the water and sewer, it's existing onsite, existing, or existing pipe network to be modified. The total project demand has been allocated per the original prelim approval and does not change with this application. Electric and gas is PSE and G, it's existing, not to be modified. Also note that the project complies with green energy requirements of the zoning, as noted in the prelim approval, and as part of this overall greater project.
I just made a statement, the project requires, complies with the green energy requirements, so could you explain that for the board? We have several new board members here who've never seen the TOD project before. I've been around since 2008 working on this, but can you, can you just explain that, you just made a statement, we comply with the green energy standards?
Right.
Meaning what?
We, we actually have an architect here that can explain that from a building system standpoint, as well as a neighborhood standpoint.
Okay.
So, any questions on the program?
I'm sorry, what?
Any other questions on the program, in general?
On what he's presented, have any more questions?
No.
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 All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, next, great, we'll bring up Nick Verderesi from Dynamic Traffic, who's our traffic engineer.
Okay.
Have him sworn in qualified.
Could you raise your right hand, sir, when you're ready? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth?
Yes.
State your name and spell your last name, please.
Nicholas Verderesi, V-E-R-D-E-R-E-S-E.
Thank you.
Mr. Verderesi, if you could just, for the record, state your education experience and vice versa?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers University in 1990, I'm a licensed professional engineer, principal founder of Dynamic Traffic, located at 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey. I've appeared here before this board probably a dozen times, I guess, at this point.
We'll accept them as.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thanks. Mr. Verderesi, if you could just briefly go through the parking overview of the roadway network and traffic issues?
Yeah, so, we did a traffic impact and parking assessment date at 6/20/25, submitted to the board, the first portion of it discusses what was previously approved on this site, what's currently proposed on the site, so there's a reduction in units. Previously, there were 273 multifamily residential units, now 122 townhouse units. So, when we looked at the trip generation, obviously because of the reduction in units, even with the change from the multifamily to the townhouse, we're still looking at a reduction of almost 100 trips in each of the peak hours. So, I, I see a lot of familiar faces, I've made this same testimony, I think, at like four of the last phases of this application. Every one but one was a reduction, and one was like a slight increase, so as we keep coming in, it seems that the, the project is getting a little bit less dense, so that's obviously a benefit as far as traffic impact. Then lastly, or a couple of things I wanted to discuss, just on the site plan in general, so you saw kind of the overall and where this lays, so the.
Excuse me, Nick, can I interrupt for one second? Again, because people aren't necessarily familiar with this, and it's just, you know, gray and white, can you just take us through where they're coming in, how they're accessing the site, where, orient there, where's Route 1, where's Panera Bread, where's Target, show everybody, you know, what's, what's what? I, I, you know, everybody is not as familiar with the, with the, with the site as you might suspect. We have a number of new board members.
Yeah, so again, I, I don't know if this, this is of an exhibit number, this plan?
This submission set?
It's two of the sheets from the plan.
Right.
So just to orient everyone, north is up on the page, Route 1 is on the left side, running from the bottom left to the top right. Aaron Road is down here at the bottom, all the way at the bottom of the page is Costco and Target. The warehouse building is over here, and the train is on the right side of the page here, and then Commerce Boulevard is up here at the top. So, the stuff in the lighter gray down here is already constructed, some, some of the fast food restaurants, et cetera, are constructed as well, Canada's is under construction now, there's some residential, I think it's 1F, that's under construction now, just to the south. So we're essentially extending that residential portion, extending the roadway network up into 1H, so then now I'll, I'll go to the larger plan, so we can all kind of see how the layout works. So again, this is oriented similar to the other plan, north is up, so the 10th Avenue on the right side, Grand Avenue running across the front, the roundabout, and Route 1's on the left. So this project has access to the, I'll say the overall roadway network of this, of TOD, along Grand Avenue at the north end here, then it connects down here to the residential portion to the south, which also extends down to Main Street, which is off the page down here at the bottom. So, internal workings, there's garages and driveways, and the majority of the units have a garage and a driveway, I'll get to the specific numbers in a minute. And there's 25-foot wide roadways throughout the network here, good connection through on-street parking along some of the areas parallel, and there's some on-street perpendicular parking, not dissimilar to what we've been doing all along in some of the other phases as well. 25-foot wide roads, nine-by-18 parking stalls, which, the 25 actually exceeds the residential site improvement standards. There's just one particular location, Prospect Street, which is along the middle of the project here, there was a comet. There was a comment that came from Jim's review letter as well as, I think it was EMS and another emergency services group as far as, it is the only street here that, that ends in a stub. It does meet the residential site improvement standards, it's about 190 feet long, 300 feet, anything less than 300 feet is permitted to not have a turnaround. However, we understand that those comments came from three different persons. So what we're gonna do is, down here at the end, we're gonna work in a little parking space or an area where EMS vehicle, if they came down to the end, needed to turn around, they'll have the ability to turn around, so we'll, we'll end up adding that, so we won't lose any parking spaces, but we'll add something down here at the end, in the area where that roundabout is at the end of Prospect. So if ambulance came down, needed to turn around, they can pull in, back up and exit, it's similar to like a hammerhead style at the end. Normally, we don't for shorter stubs. It was in three different review letters, so we figured it was something that, that the municipality felt was important.
Excuse me, it's my understanding that it wasn't, isn't just emergency services, but our Department of Public Works, we have robo-trucks and the arms on the right-hand side, so it could go down the one side and pick up, and in order to handle the units on the other side, it would have to back out now and then back down the street to try and come out. That's, that's not acceptable, you know, our, our garbage trucks can't go down, back up, turn around and then back down the street to come forward, it just wouldn't, it just doesn't work with our, with our garbage collection trucks, the arm is only on the right-hand side. So there has to be room for the garbage truck to turn around. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jim?
Yeah, you're right.
So we'll, we'll work that out as well. As far as the numbers of parking, I was trying to quickly make the RSIS calculation and they called me up before I had a chance, so hopefully someone else on my team is, or Jim maybe made that calculation already for.
Right, so we had 282 for RSIS.
282, that's using what, townhouse?
That's using.
Or just apartment?
No, it's townhouse based on the bedroom count.
Okay.
You know, I had eight times 1.8, 57 times 2.3 and 57 times 2.4.
Great.
Which got us to 282. We rounded it down to 282.
So we comply?
Well, yeah, we have 293. We also are providing, within that RSIS calculation, there's a requirement of .5 per unit to be common on the street or parallel or perpendicular spaces on the street. We have 57 of those spaces, so we meet that requirement as well, or 66, we're required to have 57.
And you have how many?
We have 66 surface spaces. So there's 113 garages, 114 what I'll call spaces behind slash tandem, so they're not in the street, they're on the.
Driveways.
Driveways. And then the 66, that's how you get to 293.
We have an exhibit here, I'm gonna mark it A2, this is gonna show the visitor parking and garage parking.
Yeah, I counted the 114 garages and the 114 driveways and then I thought the plans were depicting 35 on-street, so I don't think I got to the other spaces, but if you could clarify that, that would be great. When we mark it A2, please.
This is A2?
A2.
So the light blue or aqua are the driveway, combination driveway space behind, are all the aqua ones. Then the green are the on-street, I don't know if you're missing, maybe the ones on 10th, they have that front on our side?
Oh, yes, I thought that perhaps those were included in 1F.
F is down here, isn't it?
Right, but I think that road was, was approved on 1F, so.
Yeah, but we, we didn't include those.
Okay, no, that, that would, that would do it then.
Yes.
Okay.
And we did not include the opposite side of the street, because that'll go to that side in the calculation.
So the requirement is 1.5 per unit?
Yeah, so that, when you use 1.5, you only need 183 spaces, but when you use the residential site improvement standards, which is a New Jersey standard and not specific to this site, that was 282.
But you're including garage space with that?
Garage and space behind, yes.
All right, so, but you're adhering to the standards is my question, because I, I know from previous life in a townhome community, that 1.5 spaces is not nearly enough, but if, if that is the standard, then I have no argument with you.
Yeah, we've used well, we've used over two spaces per unit, so we're above the 1.5. So we're in kind of an agreement with you that we want to have a little bit more.
Because a lot of people don't use their garages, it's neither here nor there, it's irrelevant, I just wanted to ensure that, that that is the standard and we're adhering to it, because that's the best we can ask of you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. So are we doing the RSIS? So we're above that?
Yeah, we're meeting both standards, the municipal standards for specific to this property.
So 293 total?
293.
So which is, so we're fine?
That's if you include garage.
Yeah.
Yes.
But is that in here? I don't see that.
It said 3 something in the.
It says 309 parking.
Are you looking at Jim's review letter? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, there, there was, 309 is indicated on the plan, so one of our comments just notes a discrepancy to reconcile.
That's all I had from, for direct.
Thank you. Ken, we'll revise the, the plans to make, you know, correct the parking count.
Right, the important part is that we're 293, which is above RSIS, which is 282.
Correct.
But can you talk to us about electric vehicle charging on the site? Or who, who do you, is that the architect?
Yeah, I don't really.
Who will address that?
Yeah, that's not.
Your planner, your engineer, you don't have a site, you know, who, who would talk about that?
I think that would be our site civil.
You have a civil, your civil engineer?
Mitch Ardmann from Reynolds Group.
Yeah.
Do you want to bring him up now, Mr. Vigna?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, for the time being, Nick, we're done with you.
Tom, on page eight, we have a comment seven, which speaks to the proposed EV and the amount of.
Yes.
Required, required number.
Okay. Raise your right hand, thank you. State your name and spell your last name, please.
Certainly, first initial F, Mitchell Ardmann, A-R-D-M-A-N.
And with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, shall be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Ardmann, just briefly, if you could state your education experience and licensure?
Certainly, Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Lehigh University. I've been a licensed professional engineer for over 30 years, testifying before boards throughout the state. I've testified on this TOD project on the last several, the 1F section, a couple of the pad restaurant sites, and we've prepared this plan for the 1H site.
Thank you, we'll, we'll accept him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to address the, the EV spaces, so as far as surface parking spaces out of those 293, there were stated there are six that are proposed to be EV spaces.
I'm sorry, how many?
Six. On top of that, what this developer has done on many of the projects and what will be included here is that each garage will be make-ready also for EV. So that'll be included with the project, and they've done that on other projects as well, seeing that that's where the state is, is going to and potentially where the trend of EV vehicles are going.
And when you say the garages be made-ready, so that'll be a 240-volt outlet in the garage?
Well, that's, yes, 240, yes.
Is that what your architect is saying? Or whoever's saying?
Yes.
To be able to accommodate level-two charging?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, you're putting on the record that each garage will have a 240-volt, Pat, you're an electrician, am I stating this wrong?
Oh, you got it.
Okay.
You're on, you got it.
That's correct.
Each garage can have a 240-volt outlet to accommodate level-two charging.
That is correct.
Okay, and then on top of that, there's, there are six additional EV spaces in the, in the common parking area?
That is correct.
Will they all be in one spot or are they being spread out?
They're, they're gonna be spread out through the site, so, and we can work with, with placement on that with Jim. I believe we do have them spotted on the plan, but we'll make sure that, Mr. Watson, that we're all in agreement.
And that meets your requirements of the state statute, Jim?
So, so our comment indicated that we would need 15% of the 54 on-street parking spaces, that would be the guest spaces, and we noted nine would be needed, nine EV spaces.
So we need three more.
So if we can find a home for those three extra spaces, we'll check, you know, the math on that to make sure we're all in agreement, but.
Sure.
Yep.
So whatever the required number is.
Yeah.
And you're gonna work that out with CME?
Yeah.
So if it's nine, you're gonna make sure you have nine?
That's correct.
And those are, those are not made-ready, those actually have the conduit in the ground, those are nine electric vehicle charging stations, correct, Jim? That's not.
Well, that's another comment that we have, that we're looking for testimony regarding the, the schedule for making them operational, you know, are we intending to make them operational?
Yeah, with certain, with certain non-residential uses, you have to make made-ready spaces, but they're not, they're just made-ready for the day, whenever.
They have the conduit.
Residential units, they're actually required to be electric vehicle charging stations on those spaces, correct?
I think that's what the applicant said. That's correct. They'll be functional, yeah. Yes.
So they'll be functional?
Yes, they'll be functioning and they'll come out as the units go online, you know, in different sections of that development.
Right, depending on where you place them, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And who'll be, will you be contracting for that or we'll see, will TOD be contracting with a provider for the electric vehicle spaces?
I, yeah.
I don't think TOD is handling, I think, I think Toll Brothers is handling it, that's the sense I'm getting. I haven't heard anything from, but, so, I was just, okay, so you're not, nobody testifying is aware of that, okay?
They will be placed, I don't think we have contracts in place for that yet, but they'll, they'll be provided as required.
So just so the, outside of the six, because it says nine here, who's gonna?
Jim is saying it should be nine, it should be six or not, whatever it is.
Okay, all right.
They said if it's nine.
Plus, plus 100, plus the, how many, 113 in the garages? 113 outlets, which will allow for people to put their own charging stations.
Says 114.
114.
Oh, 114, sorry.
One in each garage.
Yeah. Oh, 113, yes.
I knew it was 113.
114 is the tandem driveways, okay.
Okay, we can continue.
Jim, are there any other comments or questions about electric, electric vehicle?
Only that one space needs to be accessible, so that should not be an issue, that's just a dimension, you know.
It's a handicap, electric vehicle space?
Correct.
One they would need?
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. That, that's it for EV, Tom.
And then I just had a handful of comments that were in Mr. Watson's report. Big picture is, as you know, we get a chance to review with Mr. Watson, he makes, his comments are all typically good for the project, so the answer is yes, we will comply, there's a handful of disqualifications I want to make under the site plan comment number five.
What page are you on? If you could refer to the page of the CME report, if you're.
Sure.
Going through it?
That is page five, number five at the bottom.
The first comment, was there a page on that first comment you made before this?
What about the?
No, 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 your introductory comment about the, the CME report, I didn't follow what you said.
No, this is the, this is the first he's speaking of.
This is the first item, so it's item five, site plan on page five.
You were saying you're gonna comply with most of the stuff except, is that what you said?
Yeah, except these four items that I'm gonna talk about.
Okay.
The first of the four, page five, item five, is the mailbox placement. Basically, we had one kiosk section, and so we will agree to, to spread them out through the site. We probably can have one for a two-building combo, we just, the qualifier, obviously, that is approved by the postmaster. Sometimes they have their own ideas on that and we'll work together with Mr. Watson and the postmaster to, to place those.
So you're indicating you revise it to include one per every two buildings?
Or, or grouped as necessary to accommodate. There's one section that might be for three buildings, just the way they sit close to each other. But we, we will agree to work with his office that they're placed appropriately.
All right, so he'll, he'll keep in touch with.
We'll, we'll work with them, yeah. I mean, our intent is that we would like residents not to have to cross roadways or feel that they need to park their car on the way home near a kiosk before they drive and park. We want them to be able to come out their door, conveniently walk to a central mailbox and go home.
Yeah, we feel we can accommodate that and work that out.
You agree with that, Tom?
Yeah, yep.
Page 11.
That was comment number one, okay.
Yeah, the next item is on grading, so I believe page 11.
Page what, 11?
Number 2A, but I believe that one follows with the waivers that we requested, that deals with the contour lines be provided. So we have spot grades there, so we'd just be looking for that waiver as well to continue with that 2A.
That, that's true, that's fine, that is in line with the waivers as, as long as the requested spot grades are provided for us to be able to analyze that we have the good.
The correct slope, not a problem to add, add those spot grades.
Yep.
So just for attorney to get this great, so that's okay as long as they provide the requested spot grade, the spot grade CME is requested?
Yes.
The third one is on page 12D, and again, so we have, throughout the site, as you heard, there, there's a drainage system, the big picture is that the major pipes of the drainage system were installed as the, the large infrastructure which go to the detention basins, there are inlets which are placed in and around the buildings, and there's a whole big report of hydraulic calculations. So Jim's asking for, on these small inlet areas, for calculations, what, what I would suggest we do is maybe 40 or so of those, if we could just pick like the largest drainage area, this gets in a little weeds on our, our technical, we'll pick, we'll pick the, the largest drainage area and provide the calculations on that, it becomes a little onerous to do the calculation in, in all those hydraulic charts, you know, on every one, so if we could show you that the worst-case works, then the rest of them would work.
That's fine.
Thank you.
We can work with that.
Yep.
So how, how would our attorney word that? Jim, how are we wording this deviation?
So I think rather than providing the computations for all the pipe runs between the lawn inlets, you're gonna give us the computations for that area and the outflow from that area, which will prove to us that they're all sized and will work without any flooding conditions.
Correct, for, for the, for the largest single inlet drainage area.
So.
So assuming you get approved tonight, maybe you could put an email together tomorrow to put that in so that we get proper language down and we'll see if Jim agrees with it?
Yeah, we can work on that.
So that our attorney has specific to work with?
Sure, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Jim, you're comfortable so far?
Yeah.
And the last item regarding landscaping on page 13 on the top, item four, the plan should be revised to graphically depict the site triangles to ensure there's no obstruction of sight lines. So the answer to that is yes, we will do that. It, it does impact some of the landscaping that we showed on the plan. So as is typical, all the lower shrubs, 30 feet, 30 inches high or less can stay because they don't block your sightline. We were gonna, the street trees, which are just kind of the one single tree, some of those were gonna remain, but if there's any evergreens or other trees that are above shrubs, that are above the 30 inches, that provide a, a major blockage of the sightline, those. those will either be moved back or removed, and there are a few that will need to be removed to make sure we have the sightline there.
Is it only in one location?
Well, I think we were concerned with that one curve up at the northern...
That's right, so we're, we're specifically talking about where Sunset Street hits Grand Avenue.
Right.
And then the site triangle, you know, to the left, there are, there's heavily planting area, because they're trying to buffer the backside of, of the residential units. So if they modify the evergreens, and we can work with them, and, and do a combination of low plantings that a vehicle stopped at the Sunset stop sign could see over, and then street trees that we can see under, then we'll have that window where, we'll have the sight distance that we're looking for, and they'll be able to provide the buffering to that unit. So we'll have to work with them on that to balance it and achieve both.
Yeah, so you understand what we're getting at?
Yes.
So it looked like on that one corner that the building is almost right at the, right at the side triangle line?
Yeah, it's just, just off the line there, so I think the building itself is okay.
So, so would that mean this, that this prop, and I don't know what the association rules would be, would that mean that, that there could not be a fence back there? I have no idea, the way these are structured, whether individual property owner, whether there, there could be a fence?
Well, that would be, wouldn't that be common property that, I mean...
Well, the short of it is, there, there couldn't be a fence in the site triangle.
Couldn't be a fence on, on that, on that unit, if, if they were allowed on another unit?
Right.
I mean, I don't think individual property owners or townhome owners can, can put up fences in this anywhere.
No, typically not, no.
Well, depends on the association.
But, can we, can we talk about that a little bit? These units, there's, there's really no outdoor, like patio space, is that correct? It's just sidewalks and...
Yeah, generally, I'm going to point to the architect, he'll, he'll go through all of it, but...
I think there's sidewalks and stairs on one side, and driveways on the other. There's, it's not a typical outdoor space.
That's correct.
Right, so...
You'll see more, but that's correct.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah, let's see.
Just going back to the sightlines. So when you say remove certain trees or shrubs, can, does that mean they're, they're just going to be taken off the plan? Or you're going to replace them with things that don't affect the sightline? Because I'm very concerned about green space.
Yeah, so some can be replaced, some will probably be removed. Probably my landscape architect got a little overzealous, knowing that we wanted to buffer that corner, and wound up putting ones that blocked that, that site triangle. So I think it'll, it'll still, it's not a huge, you know, in, in the big picture of everything, it's just really one corner.
I understand that, it's just that the more building we do, the more greenery we need environmentally, so...
Cheryl, I think, if I can interrupt, I think what our engineer was suggesting was that they modify the, the plantings, so that in some cases you have street trees that you could see under.
Right.
You know, this way that you still have a tree there, but it's not blocking your vision.
I understand that, but he was just saying remove trees, and I wanted to make the point that...
No, I get it.
If we, if we can put something else there, yeah.
As much as we can, and we want...
I just wanted to be really clear about that.
Excuse me, yeah, and we want to do that too for that unit.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a sitting area in, in, is there any common area? I know we don't, you know, the, the development of the overall site doesn't call for recreation areas, but is there a sitting area or a common area?
So we have Market Avenue running north-south. We have these two units that I'm pointing to on, on sheet one, and there's a, a planted area with some seating and benches, just to the rear, to the west of those buildings. So we do have one, one area there. And then it's, it's off of, around the circle, there's another kind of general area, has pavers and, and open area in this area also to the west of those buildings, T5, and then north of T3.
So it's pavers and a couple benches, is that what you said?
Yes.
I think there was a proposed gravel path in there as well, that I commented on.
Yeah, that'll be concrete.
So, you know, we're concerned about, I guess the buzzword is connectivity, trying to connect everything, and bicycle paths and walkways. So how, how is this set up and designed so that residents getting out here could walk to the fast-food restaurants, for example?
And that we've really tried to do with this, with this whole project. So as you come through, there, there are sidewalks that connect, you know, on the side of Chamber Street, and up Market here, and in the back of, or on the west side of all these units. So on the west side, you'll see in the back of T11, T9, T7, there's a continuous pathway which goes from north to south, and that connects to the main roadway on Grand Avenue, to the sidewalk that continues through the whole complex.
All right, so that walkway parallels Grand Avenue, or goes along Grand Avenue?
That, that's correct.
So can I, I didn't really get a good look at the lighting plan, so there, is there lighting all the way along that, along that path? Somebody would be using that walkway at night.
Yeah, there have been lights that, there'll be lights with this project, and lights that have been installed previous projects as well.
What is that walk, what is that walkway constructed of, the walkway that goes along Grand Avenue?
It is concrete, yeah, that's all concrete, the whole way, yeah.
It's a concrete walkway?
Yes.
Is there like, trees, shrubbery, that, that sort of, are they walking behind people's units that they can see in? Or is there some sort of fence, or buffer, or anything when they're walking along?
Sure, so I'm putting up now sheet 10, which is in the plan set. I believe we, we don't need to mark that.
That's correct.
So sheet 10 is the landscape plan in the plan set there. So we have the walkway, basically, between these units, there are plantings all in the back of those units, where that walkway between those units connect and then come out. And as they come down, there's a series of plantings along Grand that, you know, buffer the units, and then behind the units, there's also plantings in there. So that's basically like their community sidewalk that connects everybody and comes up. And you can see the, again, what we've tried to do off the circle is to provide a nice, heavy landscape, going to your point about, you know, units, and, and we want to see green space there. So we really have tried not to be shy on the plantings. We've put a nice evergreen rose, a mixture of evergreens and deciduous trees in, to where that connection comes down, so...
So they're on the outside of the sidewalk, not close to...
These plantings are on the outside, but right behind the units, there's also plantings around the back of each of those units.
Okay, got it. And there's no, there's no pet area, or nothing like that?
No.
At least they have a sidewalk.
Can you describe, you know, there's site improvement standards all through the TOD overlay districts. So can you just describe, again, there's several board members who've never seen this before, the type of lighting, what the fixture is going to look like? Is it going to look like, are they, are they standard streetlight fixtures that you'd see on any residential street, or...
These are the upgraded fixtures, if, if you've been through the complex, and it's been carried through this. The applicant, the owner actually bought a warehouse full of these years ago to make sure that they would be in supply. So that's kind of theme has been carried through, so it'll be more of a continued neighborhood, even though there are different sections that design standard is carried through.
So the lighting fixtures are the same type of fixtures that had been installed in other areas throughout the development?
That's correct.
And are there sidewalks, like, in front of each of the units? I know you have that one that's along Grand Avenue, that walkway there, but in, like, down Chamber Street, is there a sidewalk?
Yeah, so on the south side, so in, in each case, there wasn't a need in, in all locations to put one. So on Chambers, on the south side, so there's easy connection over there, so that they can continue down along Market, and continue down the sidewalks in that location. So in, let's see, between units T7 and, and T9, there's a sidewalk that connects through for those units. So, I mean, we've provided good connectivity, so there might not be one out the front or back door of everybody, but all, there's like a one crossing, and you can get on the sidewalk.
Is there, are there any sidewalks, like, down Market Avenue, down that street, or is that just roadway?
Yes, on Market, on the east side, there's a sidewalk that continues down on the east side of Market the whole way down.
Okay, alright.
Mary, if you look at page seven, if, looking at your display board, it looks like, it, it looks like just a bunch of gray and black markings from here. But sheet seven of your pack, you all have the 11 by 17. So if you're on sheet seven, as the engineer is going through it, you can follow along. It's easier to follow along, I believe, on your 11 by 17 packet than it is looking, looking at their display board.
I'm better with that, because it's bigger.
What was that?
It's, I'm better with the larger than, than here.
From back here...
It's too small on the plan for me, so that's why I'm trying to...
Again, north-south of Long Market, all the way down.
Okay.
And with crosswalks and...
I need a highlighter.
And then there is sidewalk on the other side of Market for about half of the street, I believe.
Yeah, there's sections that, as well. Wherever we have the, the parking spaces, they're, so you come out of the parking spaces, they connect, so that's correct, on the west side for that whole stretch.
That brings you all the way down to Park.
Yep, and that connects to the, the other section, the 1F section that we did, and continues the walks.
So you said there's sidewalk wherever there's off-street parking there? Wherever there's off-street parking, there's sidewalk?
That is correct.
And, and just on Prospect Street, where Prospect and Market Avenue meet, that, there's a crosswalk, yeah, I, I see, that there's a crosswalk from...
Yep, that's full, always on that, yes, with ADA handicap.
And also on Market Avenue as well, too.
Yep, and again, those are all accessible, ADA crosswalks.
Okay, I see, thank you.
So just a question, like, if somebody's coming from, coming northbound on Route 1, how would you, how would you guess, you know, no, how would you guess they would access the site and get into these units? Just, would they, would the logical place be to come in the, the, the middle roundabout?
The, the front street?
Yeah, that's infrequently used now?
Yeah, I mean, this would be a focus of coming in that location. That would be, you know, depends if they make any stops along the way, but sure, if coming in that front street circle, you circle around, you can head to the north inside, and then easily get to those units.
So if you came in there, you'd go around the circle, and you'd go up, you'd make a right on Sunset? Or you could, or you could come down and...
You would go through the...
There's a driveway that actually connects to the existing portion that's under construction, right?
That would be in the 1F section, that's correct. So you could wind your way down there, but if you were in one of these lower units, say, T1, 2, or 3, and you wanted to come up that way, up Market, that's potential. But a lot of people likely come in, hitting Grand, going north to Sunset, and then coming into the project area.
And if you come in south, you'd get off at the Commerce Street Jug Handling, and then come down Grand Avenue? If you're coming from the north, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Again, from a site standpoint, I think I, you know, with the EV spots question, and then those other points, the report, once again, as far as the site grading comments, drainage, all the other in Mr. Watson's report, will comply with, with each of those comments. You'll hear from the architect on some of the other open items.
Jim, did we, did we do the fourth one? I know we did three, we got the fourth one resolved, their fourth concern with your report? Or did we interrupt you?
That, no, I think that was the site triangle we were talking about.
The fourth one was the side triangle, so we got that thing, okay.
And just one question, like, where do you envision loading and unloading for, like, moving in and...
I, I think with most of these sections, they're just going to pull up in, in front of the unit on that temporary basis. You know, if they're smaller, and they can fit in a driveway, they'll do it on a more of a box truck. But if it's a, the, the big day move-in on a, a moving van, then it'll be, you know, in, on, on one of the sites, on the smaller streets, and they'll pull in there and unload.
I just had one question regarding, like, I don't even know if it's relevant, like, solar panels? That they will not be having any type of...
No, the plan isn't to have any, any panels.
And then, moving forward, I mean, if each of the residents, I mean, it's a shared roof, so I don't know.
Well, the roof is considered a common area, right? I mean, that's, that's maintained by the association, right?
Association, oh, but in the, yeah, individual residents would not be able to... And then the, the other question, I don't even know if it's relevant or not, as far as for the condenser for the units, is that in the front, the back?
The architect will go through all those, yeah.
Alright, great, just curious.
I know you're a site engineer, so you probably can answer this, but is there going to be a separate homeowners' association for these 122 units? Or is it going to be 122 units plus the 60 units that are already under construction? Is it going to be all one homeowners' association? Or do you not know, or...
It's an option, it's possible, there may be separate associations, or it might be unified. That's still to be determined at a future date.
It's a small association, 60 units.
Right, yeah, there are certain advantages to having a larger association.
I'm sorry, we can't, I'm just hearing you.
I'm sorry, I said that's a small association, 60 units, it, you know, in terms of being able to maintain an association with, is much more financially sound with a larger body of, of units.
Yeah.
Perhaps, yeah, I guess that it's an option, so it may be a, a larger HOA, or it may have smaller HOAs.
Yeah, okay, I just... This is just, has to do with disposal of waste and trash and such. It's, it's, just so I understand, it's like each unit will have their own trash, and they would each have a trash can and recycle, like, like each of the...
Residents do now, like they're single-family residences.
Okay.
Similar to the...
That's why we're concerned about the garbage truck.
Similar to the development that Pulte built, correct? You're, people are going to be putting their garbage can out to the 25-foot driveway, and our robochucks will pick it up there.
That's, that's correct, yes.
Same thing for recycling. When you put it out, you know, depending upon where you put it out, it might block, block your driveway, I mean, that's, you know...
This one, there's no common area?
Yeah, take us through that. There, there's a, there's a, there's a nine-foot parking space in front of the, in front of the garage. So if you put, if you, when you're putting your garbage out, are you putting it out right at the end of your, right at the end of your driveway? Are you blocking part of your driveway? Or is there some space to the left or right?
On, on...
Pulte Development, Jim, there was space, there was, there was some, a little, a little, a little concrete area in between, so that...
To store? Yeah, I was going to ask that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't believe in the other townhouse development that was done on the other end of the site. I don't believe the, the cans were put right behind your driveway.
No, so there's, there's a small gap in between the driveways. There's not, it's not pavement to pavement on each of them, but not every one, so it's, it's hard to see, but there are small gaps in between, so...
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Sure, the, the driveways are not all pavement to pavement, so there is a small gap in between many of them. Some of them might be right at the end, but there are, there is space to put it, so you're not blocking the drive.
Are these...
Are these public streets or private streets?
These are going to be private.
Will, will the association have a private hauler, or will the township be...
Township's going to be picking up the garbage.
Yeah, township. Yeah, township services.
And is that, like, for snow removal as well, too, and...
That's snow and all that?
That's private.
Private. Oh, so each, so, but for the streets, though, we would go in and clean the streets, wouldn't we?
We, if, if private streets, we don't do street cleaning on the streets, we're picking up their garbage, but we don't plow the snow, we don't, uh...
So, how does it, how do they...
Homeowners' Association.
How do they what?
Like, Main Street, they would have, and Market Street, they would have to come and shovel out Market Street?
Yeah.
Oh, they would hire, they would hire...
So, again, this is, this is a new development that, that...
Okay, I'm just curious, yeah.
This is a new development, again, like I was saying, some of us are familiar with it, some of us are totally not familiar with it, and we're, so, could you just go over about, about the streets? You know, they're, they're private, we're gonna be providing this, the township's gonna be providing that, could you go over that, Mitch?
Sure, uh, the only thing the township is gonna have is the responsibility for garbage removal. They'll be private streets, so, uh, maintenance, repairs, all that are gonna be by the developer, by the, by the owner, by the homeowners' association. Um, the only thing, as we connect into the public water system, that's, those lines in the street, uh, are public, and with the extent of the sanitary sewer systems, when we connect to the mains out there, the mains that are, are, are public, but they're, the laterals are private for the sewer lines, uh, but the sidewalks are all association, the town won't be shoveling, you know, it'll be association or homeowners doing that. So, it's really just garbage collection.
Maintenance of all the common area, shrubbery trees and all that becomes part of the association.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
I'm sorry, I just, I was just explaining to her that the maintenance of all of the greenery is also part of the association's responsibility, once it's turned over. Okay. All right, thank you.
Um, if that's all you have for now, we'll, we'll move on. Call you back if we need you.
Bring up our architect.
Good evening.
Could you raise your radio, please?
Sure.
Sorry. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give, show me the truth?
Yes, I do.
Did you state your name and spell your, and, uh, spell your first and last name?
Anthony Masucci, A-N-T-H-O-N-Y-M-A-S-U-C-C-I.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Masucci, if you could just, for the record, state your education, experience, and qualifications?
Sure, I have a Bachelor's of Architecture from Philadelphia University from 2011. Uh, I've been a licensed architect since, uh, 2017, and licensed in New Jersey since 2019. And I'm employed, I'm an architect employed by Toll Brothers.
Okay, we'll accept.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Masucci, if you could just briefly go through the architecture for the development, um, and there were a few questions, I think, that were asked, we can have them asked again.
Sure, yeah, let me, let me grab this exhibit over here. So, as, um, as...
Why don't we mark A, A three? I know there's some renderings on the...
Is this the same that was in the packet, or is this different?
Well, yes.
But it's colored here.
It's, it's different.
It's colored, so we'll...
Yeah, why don't we mark that A three, just...
A three?
Yeah. And, let's say, color renderings, uh, color elevations?
Sure, I can, I can show them, yeah. They should be, excuse me. What's that? Oh, got it, okay, understood, understood, yes. Um, so what you have here, this first, this is an example of the market rate units.
I'm sorry, could you, uh...
Sure.
Say it a little slower, I couldn't follow what you're saying then.
Understood, so, what you're seeing here, these are the market rate units, they are three stories. Um, this is an end unit, you have two interior units, and then you have another end unit. Um, so these are what we're calling one-point-five over one-point-five, so they're three-story units. They, uh, the first unit, the, the first level is the, they're two family units. I'm gonna bring the plan up, that'll be easier to see. Okay. So, the, the garages are located in, in the rear, um, so these are two family units, three stories. Uh, the, the lower level, there's an entrance for the lower unit, um, and then there's an entrance for the upper unit, where you would take stairs to get upstairs. Um, so, this would be the great room of the lower unit, um, you would then take a stair to get up to your, oop, sorry about that. To your bedrooms, um, and then the other, sorry, I have to kinda go a little back and forth to make it, make it clear, but...
I see, I see, I see.
Yeah, that makes, that makes easy, so...
Yeah. Pick up these stairs. Sorry.
I think we're doing...
Here's the bed rooms for the first unit.
We'll mark it A four.
Yeah, for the rec, for the record, we're being, we're being handed a colorized, uh, floor plans, we'll mark it A four.
Being handed colorized?
Colorized floor plans, we're gonna mark it A four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a little, little, a little easier to see, it's hard to explain when I'm going, flipping from plan to plan. But, uh, you can, you can see the green is one unit, where you have a garage on the, on the lower level, along with a walkway to get up to your second floor. Um, the blue for the other market rate unit, that's your main entry with your living area, and a stair to get up to the second floor. So, if you wanna flip to the second floor, you can see this, the second floor is split between the living area, great room area of the upper unit, and the bedrooms of the lower unit, if that, if that makes sense. Um, then...
Can I just say, whoever, whoever created these colored units should get a raise, because it was like a, it was like a ridiculous puzzle before.
It's, they're, they're a little complicated, yes, but I think the color, the coloring definitely helps.
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, no problem, if you flip to the next, if you, if you flip to the last page, you can see the upper unit...
There is a deck.
Is all the, uh, the bedroom area.
So, there's a, so, there is a deck?
There is a deck, yes, so the upper unit does have a deck, yes.
So, there's no patio, but there's a deck?
There's patio here.
That's gonna, can a lever over the...
Correct, a can, a can lever's over the garage.
Over the garage.
Yeah, correct.
So, so...
So, the upper unit, yes.
One of the two units has a patio, and the other one has a deck.
Correct.
So, they will be able to continue to barbecue as, as they move into their new townhouse.
Right.
That's allowed.
And what, what's this, what's this A D, A D C, A D U C trash?
Yeah, what does A D U mean?
Yes, so, so ADUs are the, are the affordable units, so, you can see the unit next to it. So, the unit we just went over is, is a two-family unit, right, three stories. The units that are on the interior, that are colored in yellow, orange, and that, that purplish color, uh, those are also three-story units, but they're three family units. So, the, the lower level is one family, um, the, the level above that is another family, the level above that is another family.
All right, so now, all right, so, go back now, so...
Sure.
Talking about interlocking units, where somebody has the first floor and has the second.
Half the second, the second...
That's only the market unit.
Correct, all the market rates are exactly the same, yes.
So, let's make that clear in record, the affordable units are not, are not one-and-a-half stories, the affordable units are all one-story.
One over one, over one.
One story, oh, okay.
So, there's interlocking units...
Correct, they each have a story within, yeah.
There are market-priced interlocking units, and then beside it can be a three, it can be a three-story, uh, uh, you know, um, affordable units, it'll be three affordable units stacked, the affordables are all one-floor.
Correct.
So, so the yellow here is an affordable unit?
Yes, yes.
And, and they have a, a garage?
Yes, so, so of the affordable units, right, top to bottom affordable units, there's three families, two of those families have garages, that's what that trash enclosure is, so the third family doesn't have a garage, but they ha, they do have a place to store their trash, on the ground floor.
But if they don't have a garage, where, so where do they park?
Uh, surface parking.
Surface parking.
Correct, yeah, they don't, they don't, they don't have, they don't have a garage.
And, and how is that designated?
So, this is the first floor, right? This is one bedroom in the first floor. And then, if you look over here, over the garage...
Yeah, these are, these are more, these are more civil engineer questions than architecture.
So, this garage, they come...
Could you speak up a little, you know, or, sort of generating almost into individual conversations?
Yeah, I'll, I'll hand over to civil engineer for the parking.
Yeah, we have Mr. Ardmann, discuss the parking.
Hi, Mitch Ardmann, again, so just on the surface parking, um, so each unit will be designated, uh, it's not always marked, although it could be marked, but each unit will be designated a spot, so that's why the parking counts, there are more than sufficient surface parking spaces for, for units, as well as for visitor spaces.
So, they're not gonna be marked?
Right now, they're not gonna be marked per unit.
I would recommend that you consider they be marked, I think that could be a problem enforcing parking.
We, we project, have projects that have been done both ways, and if that's the preference of the board, that's, that's acceptable.
Well, that, I mean, that's my suggestion, I don't know if the board feels that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm curious, like, if you have three units, but there are only two garages, I mean, who's the odd person out, or who's the...
They'll know that in their lease, moving in, it's not gonna...
I've been, I've been part of parking wars in townhomes in North Brunswick before, so, I, I think it's a good idea to consider marking...
I'm sorry, Charlotte, I can't hear you, can you?
I'm sorry, I, I'm recommending that we discuss whether or not the spot should be marked, um, and I don't know what Jim thinks about that, and I'd like your opinion.
So, I'm wondering if the non-street parking is located in close proximity to those affordable buildings?
Yes, they, it specifically has been, uh, done so that it can be, uh...
We're gonna mark, I have an exhibit, A five, which shows where the affordable units are.
So, like, building T ten there, which is the top one?
Yeah, so, A, just real quick, A five, so this is the, a portion of our dimension plan, and it just has yellow highlights on it depicting where the affordable units. So, back to Jim, T ten, uh, the affordable, so there are the ten parking spaces directly in front of those units, so there's surface parking spaces that are enough for, for that unit plus, you know, other visitors. Similar, um, on T nine, right across the street, there's fifteen spaces that are proximate to T nine and to T eight, and to the, um, T two at the bottom of the plan here, the parking spaces along Market are proximate right to those, uh, units as well, so the answer is yes, they were, make sure that they were placed, so they're close by, and Mr. Brooks, your question is, they'll know it going in, it's not gonna be battling over those spaces, I got there first kinda thing, it's, you know, there's three units, it's assigned to A and B, C, you're, you're assigned to an on-street space.
So, you're going into this unit?
I would agree, I think they should be marked.
Yeah, we could mark them, and there would still be additional spaces left.
Yeah, at the very least, for the, for the units that don't have garages, I think that, I think that would solve some problems that I can foresee.
That's acceptable.
Thank you.
So, wait, so, so in the unit, in the units that have, in the, in the buildings that have affordable units?
Yes.
Just the one here, and they're three stories high, are there always two affordables side by side?
Correct.
All right, so, just so everybody understands, in any building that has affordable units, there's gonna be affordable units, three stories high, and then affordable units right beside it, and that's gonna be, so that's six...
Correct.
In a building?
Yes.
So, four of the buildings have six affordable units, and they're in the mid, in the middle somewhere in the building...
Correct.
Side by side. And who of those six units, in each building, affordable units, will not get a parking space?
Garage, you mean, it would, it would be, uh, the, the top one.
It's the top floor unit that does not get a...
Correct.
They, they have to walk to the third floor, and they don't have a parking space? Can we make this any worse for them? So, so they're carrying, carrying groceries, they have to go up to the third floor, and they don't have a par, um, why is it the third, I'm just curious, why is it the third floor unit that doesn't get a parking space? I'm just curious, I mean...
Right, I, I just, yeah, I believe that's how, just how the units were, were designed.
I'm sorry, that's how it was designed?
Correct, yes.
At least they have a trash.
Does...
They, yeah, they do have a trash, yeah.
And what's that?
They have a little trash area.
They have a place to put their trash.
Oh, yeah, where do they put their trash?
They do, next to the garages, they do have, um, in between the two lower unit garages.
Oh, the A D, ADUs?
Yeah, it's kinda just the way the units worked out, yeah.
It's like a mini garage for the trash.
How do they, how do they get into that area?
Uh, it's access from the outside, I believe.
Probably a door.
So, there's a little, if you look at that, that purple area, there's, there's a little door there.
That, um, the, the stairwell that goes up...
For, for which one, for the affordable or for the, for the market rate?
Well, it's a, it's a general question, the stairwell that, that goes up in all of the units.
Mm-hmm.
Is it, um, is it external, or is it enclosed? Is it, like, inside of the building?
It's inside the building, yes, yes. So, the, so for the market rates, it, it would just be for the person going up to their upper unit, uh, for the, for the, um, affordable units, the two top levels will share that staircase to get up to their associated units.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I wanna understand how, floor three, the affordable...
Yes.
How do they, they're, how do they get to their trash? Do they have to walk around the building?
They can throw it off the deck.
Throw it off the deck.
I don't see where they can go out, they can't go out, 'cause it's the third floor.
Right, they, they would have to get to the ba, to the back, yeah.
So, they have to go out the front and go around the back?
Correct.
That's, wow, I would not buy a third-floor unit, I can tell you that right now. I'm sorry, it's just an opinion, but that's not a great setup. I'd be throwing it off, they'd be throwing it off the deck, and then go around and...
So...
It's just, yeah, it's just tough when you have all those units tight.
So, on the market units, the, uh, uh, one of the, whoever has living space on the first floor has a patio, and then the, uh...
The upper unit has a...
The homeowner that has the, has the entire third floor has the deck...
Correct.
Which is on the second floor.
Correct.
So, on the, on the affordable, explain, explain where the barbecue, where are they barbecuing, the three, um, affordables, uh, the bottom, the first floor has a patio...
Correct.
And then when I go to the, then I go to the second floor, the deck page...
They have a deck out the back, over the garage.
I'm sorry, the what?
They have a deck out the back, over the garage.
They have a deck in the back, over the, over the garage.
And then same with the third floor, there's another deck.
Okay, so there's a deck, there's a deck above a deck?
Correct.
Okay, and, and what is this white, what is this white cutout on third?
That's just how the, how the roof is playing down, so that it's probably better to see, um...
It looks to me like you chopped out a part of the building, I know you didn't, but I'm...
Yeah, it's, it's, so from the second floor, you would see, you would see, at, at the third floor, there'd be roof in that area, so it's, it's not really chopped out, but there's a, there's a roof going down. Um, I believe it's in one of the, uh, the renderings here.
Do you have a rear elevation on this?
I don't get this.
Oh, here, there it is, right there.
So, the third-four unit is a much smaller unit, so there's no, there's no, there's no building, there's no rooms in that, where that white cutout is, because the third-four unit is the smallest?
It's here.
Huh? No, I'm not getting it.
Here, Tom, look at...
They go all the way to almost the last page.
Second to the last page.
Last page of the original architectural? On page 10?
Left side 10, not right side 10.
So here you can see how the roof planes down at the third floor.
So, I know we're talking roof, but what's the purpose of that? Is that for runoff, or what is the...
Now, you aren't trying to confuse us intentionally tonight, right?
Of course not, no.
Okay, I was thinking there's a, there's a plot going on here.
Not at all.
Are you calculating how long it's taking us to figure this all out, I wonder?
I just have two questions. One, for the patio, is there any type of enclosure for that patio, or is it just open?
It's completely open, yeah.
It's gonna...
Well, there'd be, there'd be a guardrail, yes, but it wouldn't be actually, like, enclosed. Or, I'm sorry, you're saying the patio or the deck, I'm sorry?
The patio.
No, there, I don't believe there's any sort of enclosure.
So it's just concrete, and it's just, you could put chairs or something like that?
Correct.
And then the second unit, where are the condensers for the units?
So they're, for the market rates, they're actually at the rear... Yeah. No, so, sorry, let me page through here.
They're not on the balcony?
Yeah, no, they are, they are.
They are on the balcony?
So, yeah, for the market rate, they would be on the, on the deck area, the balcony.
Okay. And then for the, for the other ones, are they...
They would, so the first, so for the two, the two family market rate units, the condenser is at the grade, and then the second, the upper level, it's on that patio, that, excuse me, that balcony area.
You're going to place the condensing unit on the deck? That what you said?
That's what they said.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm sorry, run that by me again? The, the condensing unit's going to be on the deck, where they have their barbecue and their chairs. How big is, how big is the deck?
I believe it's separated by a wall, yeah. Let me look at the rear elevation.
I can't really do that.
No, it's not separated by a wall. It's, it's open.
Does it say six by nine, five by nine?
Yes.
Five by nine, cut. And then there's the separate section where the condenser is.
Oh, so the deck shows us five by nine, and then there's the CND, that's a condensing unit?
Correct.
And what is this? What is this little...
That's a sprinkler room.
Oh, I was asking about this little...
For the sprinkler system.
And you have, you have fire suppression over the, over the deck, because people are going to have barbecue grills on that?
Yes. Yes.
I thought, I thought, so you looked to the audience. Yeah, that's a definite yes?
Correct.
Right, okay. We had that issue with PULTI, fire, our fire subcode required that.
And there's no, there's no separation at the end of the deck to the other unit? Like, sometimes they have?
Divider.
Like, some sort of divider to give a...
No, they're, they're, they're open.
How noisy are those air conditioning condensers?
I don't have a...
A ballpark. I don't, I, you know...
Like a decimal rating, a decimal rating, I'm not, I'm not positive.
I'm just wondering, if you and your wife and your daughter were out there, you know, if you cooked up some burgers and it went on, would you still be able to have a conversation?
Right, yeah. With townhomes, it can be difficult to fit in condensing units.
I'm sorry?
With townhomes, it can be difficult to fit in condensing units, and they can be a tad noisy.
So they can be a tad, so my question was, could you still have a conversation if you were sitting around a table having a burger?
I would, I would say so, yeah.
Okay. I saw you getting the nods from the audience. Okay.
Well, there's, there's no code against it, so...
No, 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 I was just curious.
Is there, is there a wall?
Uh, no, there's no wall.
Because there's a line shown between the deck area and the condenser area.
Is that a full wall, or is it just a...
What drawing are you on, Jim? Five?
I'm on the color...
The colored ones?
Yeah, like on...
Oh, that one?
Eight. I'm on eight, just looking at the deck units on the second floor. You know, it looks like, there's a line that separates the deck and the condenser area.
Yeah, looks like a line.
And then they place the condenser for the adjacent deck.
Yeah, what is that line? What, it was, if you're not sure, maybe somebody from Toll Brothers knows if they've built this unit before. Are you, are, do you know, what is that line separating the condensing unit from the deck space?
Yeah, there, there's no separation. I'm not sure what that graphic would be.
There's a line, there's a line there showing something.
Yeah, that, that may be just, just an error in the drawings.
It may just be there to show the patio area.
To show the designation between the two spaces.
Oh, okay. So that's not, not a wall?
Correct.
The, the wall between the... You know, the unique design.
Between, between the units, individual units, yes.
You know, in a standard townhome, there's a firewall, et cetera, so it's the exact same as a side-by-side would be for the, so...
For the, for the flooring, for the walls, it'd be a rated wall.
So you're not going to hear your neighbors, you're not...
Correct, it has a sound rating as well that needs to meet per code.
Okay. Question. Over the door, like, in one elevation, I see it's only over one door, so you're going to have a covered area over both doors?
Yes, so for the, for the doors that are, that are not recessed, they get, they get a covered entry. Because some of the units are, you see the doors are recessed.
The other ones that don't have it are recessed.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so that answers that question.
I'm not saying anybody from Toll Brothers has to, has to come up and say anything, but Toll Brothers has built this product line before?
Is it, yes. A similar product. This is, this is, this is a newly designed product that we're just starting to...
A very similar interlocking?
Correct, yeah. We just started documenting CDs on these.
I'm sorry, what?
We just started documenting, the construction documents on these particular units, but similar units have been built in other phases.
Toll Brothers has built similar units like this, the interlocking?
Correct.
Um, the affordable units, Mr. Flannery, the affordable units, the way our firm of the marketing plan is set up, and our affordable housing plan, what we've done is, I'm the township-wide, you know, agent, administrative agent, but for each project that has affordable units, each project so far, including TOD Associates, they've put together a package, they've submitted, here's how we're going to handle the marketing and this and that. So what we do is, I review it, meet with them, revise it, then I send a letter to the governing body recommending that, for example, with TOD Associates, for what they're building, TOD Associates is approved as the onsite administrative agent reporting to me. So we would, we would be expecting that the same thing would happen with Toll Brothers. Whether Toll Brothers uses their own staff to handle it, or whether they sub it out to a consultant, whatever, we don't care, as long, but, but we would not be looking, the township is not looking in any way, shape, or form be involved in the, the marketing, but you'd have to submit a, a package to us for, you know, an acceptable package, which would then go to the governing body, and they pass a resolution, they would be approving Toll Brothers, or whatever company you were using to be the, to be the administrative agent.
Yes, we would comply with that requirement. Mr. Viggo?
Another question?
Sure.
The, the corridor or the hallway going into units, you know, B and C, that are sharing that, that hallway, is that, what's the material, is that, do we, we haven't got to materials yet, is that like carpet, or is it concrete, or is it...
A shared stairwell?
Yeah, it would be, it would be finished. I don't, I don't know at this point what the material would be, but it would be, it would be a properly finished surface, yeah. Like a carpet, or a tile, or a laminate.
The interlocking units, is there any other benefit other than trying to make the most of the space to accommodate these townhouses? Is there any other benefit to an interlocking unit as opposed to more of a traditional-style townhouse?
It's really, I would think, just for space purposes and fitting the proper amount of units that we could fit on the site. Just for efficiency, yeah, just interlocking them, yeah. Sure.
Do we have any more questions for the architect?
I just want to talk about green, the green design.
Right.
That was brought up earlier.
Correct. So, so they're under 1,500 units, so it wouldn't be qualified for LEED?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
No, no problem. So it's under 1,500 units, so it wouldn't qualify for LEED certification? Because it's under 1,500 units. And there's been other green improvements in other phases where this wouldn't, this one in particular wouldn't qualify.
Yeah, there, there was, the way the ordinance was initially written, Cheryl, they didn't have to design units that would qualify for LEED until they got to, you know, to the very end of, the very end of the project. So these are not required to meet LEED. Their architectural standards detailed, architectural standards that I stole from a bunch of places out west, and everything, and are you, are you stating on the record that the design, the design of the facade for these interlocking townhouses meets all of the design standards for this type of housing in the transit village overlay district?
Correct. Yes.
You personally have gone over all the standards and the colors, and you're aware of the fact that it needs...
We're, yeah, we're, like I said, we're in the process of documenting the construction documents now, so we'll make sure that we are looking over those standards and make sure we are aligning with them.
Okay.
Because this is still, yeah, this is, yes.
So it, it will mean, so what you've shown us may not completely meet it, but when all is said and done, that would have to be a, that would be a condition. Normally, when TOD Associates comes in, their architect goes through and establishes and shows us how they've complied with all the various architectural requirements, you know, takes, but...
And these also align with the other units in other phases regarding materials?
I'm sorry, what?
These also align with the other units in other phases regarding materials. So it'd be similar to the other phases that are, that are being worked on now.
Okay, so is any approval would be subject to the architecturals, you know, meeting all the architectural requirements, subject to the, I guess, the approval of the zoning officer and myself?
Correct.
So the same colors? It's, it's a consistent color scheme as well?
Yes, so, let me go through here. Yeah, they're all, they're all different gray scales. You have certainties, horizontal signing, that's a lighter gray. You have vertical board and batten signing, that's a darker gray, but they're all in a gray scale that, that works well.
We're doing gray all through, huh?
Correct.
I drive through there. I didn't realize we were doing gray. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is anybody else? Jim, you have any questions regarding this? No?
No, I think I'm good right now.
You're good? Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We're good, thank you. Do we want to?
Put it to the public?
You know, I just, I'm glad our traffic guy is still here, because I just want to double back to that issue that you brought up about the, about the garbage trucks and that area on Prospect Street, and how we're going to, how we're going to fit a turnaround. Seems very close to the street, very close to the sidewalks. You know, is that, is that possible without taking away those parking spaces that are there? At the end, down at the end of Prospect Street?
Yes. We could have Federici come up and answer that.
Or maybe your engineer and your traffic engineer, whoever it is, try and figure it out.
I think they indicated, I think you indicated earlier that you would work with our engineer, I think, I think, yeah, Nick commented that you would, you would work with our engineer and the staff of the township to come up with a way to make either turnaround there, or space for vehicles.
For an ambulance. That was before I brought up robo trucks.
But he agreed to garbage as well.
Oh, is that?
He agreed to garbage as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can work something in here. If we have to shift the sidewalk a little to get it to work, we'll, we'll get it to work there.
All right, so Jim, that's something that you're going to make sure happens?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that would be subject to, subject to engineers' approval, who will be coordinating with our director at DPW, to make sure it works with their vehicles? Yes.
Yes, if we could, I'll work with Jim to get that information on the size of the vehicle, wheelbase, everything, and then we'll run those templates and make sure it works.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure we had that down. Okay. All right.
I have one, one last question for the engineer, for the engineer, engineer as opposed to traffic engineer. Does this, is this project, is this on the site of the big pile of dirt out there, or is this in front of the big pile of dirt?
Oh, yeah. The big pile of dirt will be moving with, with this project.
So this project is going to result in all that, that, the little ski slope disappearing?
We're supposed to get snow this winter.
One of the documents I thought said you'd be using some of that dirt, is that, not just...
Yeah, we put the grading on here.
Yeah, we, we looked at the grading. We're not going to lose too much dirt in this section, but in other sections, we're going to be trying to continue to use that dirt so we're not shipping it offsite.
Thank you.
So that pile's going to emerge somewhere else?
Yes, as we, as we come in with next phases of, of projects.
I didn't understand your question.
The pile's going to move somewhere else.
Oh, so the pile, so the pile is just being moved, because looking at the, at the existing conditions map, I didn't see where the, I didn't see where the pile of dirt was. Existing conditions map, is, no, where's, what map, Jim, what map showed existing site conditions?
Yeah, because those, those contours, it's an under-construction area, so it was not recontoured to show that, that pile at this time, but it's kind of constantly moving.
But where is the, where is the pile on this map? Is, you know, are, are your townhouses going to go in areas that are currently a pile, or you just need to move it because of your roads? Where is the pile relative to what you're building?
Yeah. A, a large portion of, of the site. So basically, we've kind of outlined in, in blue on this map, so this was the, the site, the overall site plan sheets, the two sheets put together. So the gray is the, this whole 22, so most of, of that area is the pile.
Is the area where you're building. And, and so the soil will be pushed back further onto the site, because there was conversation about how excited everybody was to see that mound of dirt disappear. So it's going to be shoved farther back on the site.
Right, and as we develop those sides, you'll see that, those plans in the next while when we're back again. But, so, that'll give us a chance to raise that portion of the site. So that'll be moved over basically east on the project.
So it'll still be a similar height?
Yeah, in general, I would say yes. Yeah, depending how big an area, might it be a little wider, a little flatter, but consider about...
Yeah, because it was my understanding that, that it was portrayed to us, that it'd be good to see that, that disappear, but it's just going to be moved back, but it could be made wider and lower. Okay, so, where, where is the pile going to go? Where do you, where do you think in your professional judgment the pile is going to go? Where do you think in your professional judgment the pile is going to go?
The best place would seem to be behind the warehouses.
Behind the warehouses?
I would think so. Be well done.
So that's in line with what I had heard during earlier discussions. Thank you, Mitch.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Okay, if anybody from the board has any more questions? We're good? All right. Motion that we open this to the public?
I will open this meeting to the public.
Second.
Okay. Anyone from the public would like to be heard on this particular application? Hi.
Hello.
Could you state your name and spell it, please, for the record?
Yep. My name is Harish Chamathy. C-H-A-M-A-R-T-Y.
Okay. And your address?
We're at 53 Green Street, so in the...
I'm sorry, couldn't you...
53 Green Street. So the heights at Main Street, the Pulte Homes.
Okay.
Yep. So just the one thing, because we had talked about the space for the garbage trucks and the recycling bins. So one issue we've had, which you might want to consider with this project, is we have balconies on the second floor. And so when the recycling truck comes in, picks it up with the arms, right now, even with the way our townhomes are built, the recycling bins have a tendency to hit that bottom of the balcony.
Really?
So just something to be aware of in terms of having the proper spacing.
The alleys or roadways in your development are narrower. We learned from that. We got the crap beat out of this by DPW in a nice way. But it became an issue, so...
So I guess we're aware of it.
The road... We're aware of it and the roadways are wider.
Okay, perfect.
It doesn't help here. We're not widening your roadway, but, you know. So just stay off the balcony when they're doing the recycling.
So if you don't mind, I'd like to know if there are other things that you would like to see differently, if possible?
No, I mean, I think that's the biggest thing. Like, you already talked about how the truck has to go through and come back. I mean, it has to do the same thing for us just because we have bins on both sides of the road.
Right.
Aside from that, I think everything else I've heard answered my questions. I wish there's more open space like we have, but I think there's just constraints on the site for that.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? Motion that we close the public portion?
So moved.
Okay. So...
I'd suggest we have our attorney go over potential conditions that we discussed, you know, relative to any motion for approval that might come out.
All right. We normally have conditions or common conditions in all of our resolutions in terms of needing to get any other approvals you need from any other agencies that are relevant. And if the site changes or if the plans change in any way, they need to come back and let us know what's going on. Pay their taxes, et cetera, et cetera. With regard to this application, we have a condition regarding Prospect Street, both for garbage. And I'm just going to talk about these. They're not going to be as artfully as they will be in a resolution. But Prospect Street down the end, in terms of what's going to happen in, for emergency vehicle access, wider area down there plus the issues of the garbage trucks going back and forth, that's going to be hopefully resolved between the applicant, Public Works, and our engineering office. Nine EV stations will be required at the location to be discussed with our people, you know, with our engineer.
I'm sorry, run that by me again?
I have nine EV stations.
Right.
And in addition to the fact, I don't know if it needs to be a condition, but the garages will be ready in the event they're needed with a 240 volts of...
Outlet.
240 volt outlet per garage to be made ready in the event...
I'm sorry, I wouldn't use "made ready." I would say just be equipped with outlets for EV chargers.
Yeah.
Okay. We have, the applicant has agreed to the comments set forth in our engineer's report with four exceptions. And they will be, let's see, ones with regard to the spreading out of the mail, mailing facilities per the post office and per our engineer. Another relates to spot grades. The board indicated that they are, they will accept the waiver request or agree to the waiver request in terms of spot grading in certain areas that's set forth in Jim's report, which I will elaborate on in a resolution. Another area with regard to drainage areas, the applicant indicated that they are going to calculate the largest single drainage area, largest single inlet drainage area, which according to the testimony would be the worst case. And if that doesn't fail, then that would bode well for everything else. And they also...
And your engineer is going to send some language over to work out with Jim, your attorney, for that? Okay.
Yep. Landscaping. We have that corner, Sunset and Grand, which the applicant has agreed would need to be tweaked with our engineer in terms of either low plantings and/or high plantings so that there would be the required visibility at that intersection. That would be important. Wherever there's off-street parking, there would be sidewalks. Assuming it's on the plans, I don't think we need to make that a specific condition unless the board so chooses. Surface parking, each unit will have a designated spot and the board wants that spot to be marked. Now, on surface parking, are we talking about each unit? Each of 122 or 23 units?
Just the units that don't have a parking space, correct?
Okay.
It's just the affordable units that don't have a parking space. We'll have one designated or two designated units? One?
One. We'll have one designated spot. And that will be marked so that each unit would know what their responsibility is. There will be an administrative agent, either Toll Brothers or their designated agent to act as approved by the governing body to act as the go-to person in case certain information was needed. I have Prospect Street again, which is an important issue for the board. The garbage truck, how that's going to be handled. I don't know if you want the pile of dirt indicated as a condition to be moved.
Yeah, that, yeah. That the pile of dirt will be removed from view from Route 1 behind the warehouse. That'd be a condition of approval.
The design of the facade and the materials will meet all design standards for this zone district and all architectural standards. I'm sure I missed one or two. And there'll be other requirements as well in terms of... There's a subdivision here. I don't think we talked about it much. But I usually put language in the subdivision. If there's a subdivision, that the documents before they're recorded need to be reviewed by the engineer and by the attorney's office in terms of language, in terms of meets and bounds. That's before it's recorded. So I will have language to that effect also. And it'll be, you'll be seeing it before you adopt it. But those are the big points that I found.
I think you got them all.
Okay.
If I just, for one second, we didn't talk much about the subdivision. I'm just curious, why are there five lots with 11 buildings? Just from a layman's standpoint. Why? I'm just curious why it lays out that way. That's something that Nathaniel's laughing about. So is TOD involved in this?
I can answer, but it's not on the record.
You're not allowed to be?
I can certainly answer.
We would have to... Well, why don't you come on up? Yeah, I'm going to have to swear you in, even though the hearing is at its twilight. Swear you in.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make it quick.
If you could raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application, do you swear the testament of me owning, you're about to give, shall be the truth?
Yes.
Could you state your name and last name, please?
Nathaniel Welsh, W-E-L-S-H.
W-E-L-S-H. Daniel, okay. And you are...
Nathaniel.
I'm the partner with the owner, the applicant. It's five lots, Tom. We're making one lot, but it requires adjustment to five lots. So the main portion of this is coming off of the warehouse lot, which is 90 acres. So we're carving off five or six acres of it. But when we do that, we have to adjust a lot line on Panera's parking lot. We have to adjust a lot line on something else. So it's minor changes just to make it one lot. And then it's a condo association, so there's only one lot for the actual buildings.
So all 11 buildings are going to be one lot?
One lot. The other adjustments are just to...
Other lots are all common space, roadways and...
No, so all of the buildings, all the roadways and all the common space within the outline of what you see in gray here is one lot. The other adjustments are to streets here, a little corner adjustment there and a corner adjustment of the basin lot, just to make the lines line up.
All right. Okay, thank you.
You good with that?
Yeah. Did you have any idea?
No, but it didn't really bother me. But that's, you know, that's just me. Anyway. All right, if nobody else has a question, if we can get a motion on this application?
So moved.
So moved what? Are we...
Yes, oh, sorry. So moved, yes. I, for, I think, you know, all my questions were answered and I think...
So you're making a motion to approve the application subject to the attorney's comments and the...
Correct, yes.
Engineers.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. If we can have a vote, please.
Mr. Melanson?
Yes.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Vigna?
Yes.
Ms. Vitale?
Yes.
And Mr. Brooks?
Yes. Thank you very much.
You got it. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion that we open it to the public portion for general comment.
Make a motion.
Second.
Anybody from the public? Nope. Okay, motion that we close the public portion.
I'll move to close it.
Second.
Okay, and a motion that we adjourn the meeting, which I can't do now because I'm sitting here.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
No, you're here.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Good night.